Coming on, hold on a second here. And we're on.
All right, thank you very much. Welcome, everyone. This is the December 7th, 2020 meeting of the Millis Select Board. My name is Jim McCaffrey. I'm the chair. We also have Pete Germain, who is the vice chair, and Aaron Underhill, our clerk. We also have Karen Underhill, Karen Underhill. Jared Barret, who is our operations manager, and Mike Kazinsky, administrator. Others will be joining us as we go through the conversation tonight. The first item we have on our agenda really is a recognition of the fact that we had a recent retirement by one of our longstanding police officers, Peter Opanisets. And I would just like the chief to speak for a moment about him and tell the town about his, Peter's decision and that we're going to, of course, we're going to move to appoint him shortly, but in any event, so chiefs of fire.
Thank you, sir. Obviously, with the new COVID restrictions, this is a bit unconventional. Typically, we bring, bring the retiring officer in in front of the board and recognize him formally that way. Unfortunately, Officer Opanisets can't be here tonight. He is down in Florida enjoying retirement. So with that being said, Officer Opanisets has been outstanding for the Millis Police Department. He's had 34 years as a police officer in the town of Millis. And since 2010, he served as our court prosecutor. So he carried, always carried himself in a professional manner with other officers, district attorneys, and law enforcement throughout the community. And I want to extend a big thank you to the board for writing up a proclamation to which we presented to him on his last day. Again, it was a bit unconventional, so the best we could do for him was give him, give him an escort home that afternoon to his house in Medway. And Officer Opanisets will be missed by all of us here.
Very good. Thank you very much. Now, were you met with any resistance as you moved into Medway or was that?
Medway, Medway was kind enough to roll the troops out as well to recognize Officer Opanisets. We had assistance from about five other patrol officers. So it was, it was great. And the fire department was kind enough to come along as well.
Very good. So even with restrictions, we're able to mark an important milestone in his life as well as in the community's life. So yeah, the board did declare his retirement day to be Peter Opanisets' day in the town. And we certainly appreciate all his efforts for all these many years. You know, a lot of things go unnoticed and a lot of folks are unsung, but we're very grateful that he had served the town of Millis for so very long and so very well. And we appreciate all his efforts. So thank you to Peter. And thank you, chief, for making sure that we're aware of it and make sure that we made some effort to recognize his contribution. So.
Thank you, guys.
You want to say a word while we have you here about your toy collection?
Yes, so we are still doing our toy collection. As usual, we've joined forces with the fire department and we are collecting up until December 14th, 3:00 PM. You can drop off toys to the police or the fire department. We're looking for new toys preferably. And if you prefer not to give toys and you want to do a gift card, we're in need of those as well, specifically to Roach Brothers or Grocery Store and perhaps like Target, Walmart, Marshalls, or Kohl's, something of that nature. We find that the children that are in need of clothes more, just as much as they need toys. But the outpouring of the community has been outstanding over the years. And COVID or not, we're still doing our toy drive. And the generosity up to this point has been outstanding by the town. So thank you for bringing that up.
Well, I know, chief, there are a lot of people who'd like to pitch in and rap and whatnot, but I guess we're going to have to curtail that a little bit this year, right?
Yes, sir. We, I have received a couple of phone calls and just based on the spike in COVID with the winter months approaching, we are prob, we're going to keep it limited to police and fire staff and we'll get the items out. And we appreciate it. Hopefully, we're back to normal next year because it gives us a good opportunity to meet folks from town as well.
Well, thank you very much, and we appreciate your caution and because it reflects the department and the fire department's commitment to the health of our citizens. But hopefully, yes, next year, we'll have our army of wrapping paper folks back in action and able to help out. Big event in the town. And usually it happens at the biggest space, which is the fire department. And so the firefighters, the police officers and staff better start working right about now because there's a lot of wrapping to do.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, next item we have on our agenda is the appointment of a reserve police officer. So I'll first ask the town administrator to introduce this subject and then he will call upon the chief as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. After consultation with the chief, I'd like to appoint Peter Opanisets as a reserve officer for the town of Millis. He would, if appointed, maintain his annual firearm certification as well as yearly in-service training with the police department. So I don't know if the chief has anything else to add, but I would just ask this evening for the board's ratification of that appointment.
Yes, chief, would you like to just explain to us the value of this to the town?
Absolutely. So typically, when an officer retires, we can still use their abilities with our traffic details that come in. They come, they vary in the amount each day, but in the peak of the season, we sometimes field anywhere between 10 and 15 jobs a day. And we rely on the retired officers to fulfill those jobs. And it takes the curse off other towns as well from coming in and helping us out. Currently, we have Sergeant Dwyer and he's a reserve and he enjoys coming out, working the details and seeing his coworkers. And we would like to do the same for Officer Opanisets.
Very good. Is there an effective date for this?
I would use tomorrow if you guys ask it.
Sure. So any comments from my colleagues on the board? If not, I'd take a motion to approve the town administrator's appointment?
I move that we approve the town administrator's recommended appointment for Peter Opanisets to be a reserve police officer.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the board approve the town administrator's appointment of Peter Opanisets as a reserve police officer for the town of Millis effective December 8th, 2020. Hold the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Is Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. And we thanked the chief for his good work. We thank Officer Opanisets. When he gets back from Florida, we're happy to help us out. But I think it's really a good use of somebody's talents to continue to pitch in and help out, so we appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, we're a little bit ahead, so I'm going to drop down to item 20-278, which is an item relating, which is an unscheduled item, but it's relating to an important vote with respect to the DPW construction project. So, Mr. Kazinsky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As something that we've done, the board has done a number of times in the past, a request has come in from the PBC to waive all inspection fees for the DPW building project. And the project would still be responsible for paying all the actual inspection costs, which are generally $40 per inspection. And as we've spoken about before, it's something we're looking at, this particular item is something we're looking at for a future town meeting to make this adjustment so the board doesn't have to go, you know, through this process every time. But I support the request of the PBC that the inspection fees be waived and that the cost of the project be limited to the $40 per inspection.
Any questions from the board members?
Just for clarification, oh, excuse me.
Yes, Mr. Germain?
Just for clarification, when you say waive all inspection fees, yeah, you're going to be paying inspection costs. What's the differentiation there?
The fees are approximately double. We're basically waiving a lot of the overhead associated with the costs of administering the permits and simply the cost of the payment to the actual inspector.
Thank you. That's the clarification I wanted.
Okay. So is there a motion?
I move that we approve, I move that we waive all municipal inspection fees for the DPW building project.
Second, in addition, the project's responsible for maintaining the $40 per inspection fee.
Right, the inspection fee to the inspector. It's been moved and seconded for the town to waive the building fees, but have the charge for the actual cost factor. Hold the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Is Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. Essentially, that means that the town will not be paying itself, which is really the point. Okay.
We will not be, yes, we will not be paying ourselves or borrowing money to pay ourselves.
To pay ourselves, we will be paying inspectors their, their fee under the inspection fee program. Okay, the next item I have on the agenda, I think I'll jump back up to the scheduled items. It's almost 6:45. This is, I report an update for the board. As we've said, we're going to get recurring updates from the treasurer, I'm sorry, from the finance director as we go through the year, looking at where we stand from a financial point of view. Obviously, we, the town meeting voted to increase the budgets back to the original amount based upon expectations of collections, but we're going to continue to monitor very closely how those collections are holding up. So I assume, Carol, are you on here this evening?
Yes, I am.
Very good. Karen, can you just pull up the finance director's memo? So if anybody on the call wants to look at it, they can.
Yep, hold on.
But in the meantime, I would like to ask the town's finance director, just to summarize for the board and the questions that we might have about how we're doing with respect to the, the financial situation through November 30th.
Oh, thank you. The town's financial position is trending positively for FY 2021 as of today. Local aid distributions, we had lower than, 5% lower than the governor's FY 2021 budget proposal. But based on the information we received from the DOR on Friday, December 4th, the FY 2021 Conference Committee budgeted local aid for Millis is expected to be $6,454,836. That's an increase over the FY 2021 local aid budget of $270,035. This is in, when I gave the information back in September, we expected it to be $237,000. So this is an additional approximately $35,000 over what we had anticipated as additional revenue coming in.
Here somewhere. Where did it go?
Our FY 2021, quarter one and, and two real estate taxes have been collected at a 95% rate. This is 3% less than we collected at this time last year. I'm anticipating that we're going to receive closer to probably 98% by December 31st. People will continue to pay the real estate taxes from now until the end of the year in order to take advantage of the, of real estate tax exemption on their federal income tax and state. Marijuana impact fees for FY 2021, quarters one and two are, were $175,268. We'll also receive a matching local auctions tax of 3% and bringing in an additional $175,628. Our motor vehicle receipts for calendar year 2020, excise taxes are, are issued based on calendar year and not fiscal year, are trending higher than collections at this time last year. And we have an additional probably marijuana growth 2020. Our new growth was certified by the DOR on October 14th in an amount of $1,250,982. This is an increase of $552,243 over what was budgeted for the FY 2021 new growth amount. Free cash was certified for the DOR on September 24th in the amount of $653,839. The November 7th town meeting authorized the use of $227,848 of that money, leaving an available free cash balance of $425,990.
Okay. I'd like to ask a couple of questions and I'll have our, my colleagues also ask questions they may have.
Sure.
The real estate tax collections, which you say is 95%, that it's, we haven't collected 95% of the dollar amount we collected last year. We've collected 95% of the bills that we sent out, right?
Exactly. For FY 2021, the bills that were sent out, we've collected 95% of that.
Okay, so from a pure cash point of view, we've collected more money. It's just that the percentage is a little bit lower?
Okay, as I said, the percentages are a little bit lower just because by the end of December, you'll have several more people paying their real estate taxes. So as of December 30th, I think we'll be on par.
Okay. For the, in terms of the cash position, you make a statement at the beginning that from a cash flow point of view, we, we have strong cash flow. We have the money we need to pay our bills. We're not having to hold up anything because we have the money we need to pay the bills. I guess that's, that's the question.
Exactly. We have plenty of money to pay the bills.
Well, we have enough money, whether it's plenty.
We have money to pay the bills as they become due. How about that?
Right, so there's no short-term borrowing or anything for this kind of stuff? I mean, other than, you know, bonded projects, but.
Exactly.
The good news is the cash flow is good. And then the marijuana money, of course. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, this money, which is $350,000 so far this year, that money, how is that money treated for budgeting purposes for FY 21?
FY 21, all we had in the budget was $25,000 for marijuana impact money. And the remainder of it is, would be over and above what we currently have in the budget.
So we budgeted at the expenditure of $25,000 and we've collected $350,000?
Right.
For half the year.
For half the year.
And we are in this situation because the retail marijuana establishment apparently is doing well. And on the other hand, the DOR would not allow us to project the receipt of this money for this fiscal year, which means rolling into free cash, I assume.
Right.
For next year.
That's correct.
It's an unfortunate way that we've been required to do this because we've got the money in the bank, so to speak. We just can't use it, which is a strange outcome, but in any event. Maybe next year they'll treat it differently. Who knows?
Well, we'll have to ask them what the guidelines are for this year, whether it'll allow us to use the amount that we currently have received for next year's budgeting purposes. It'll just have to wait and see what their determination is.
Right, I mean, the rationale they gave us was it was an unknown number, which we hadn't really had before, so how could we estimate it?
Exactly.
It was an unfortunate position that the DOR took because based upon sales we had already seen, we knew it was going to be more than $25,000, be that as it may. Not one to complain, but it's, the Commonwealth is quite eager to charge you for things they charge you for, but perhaps not so eager to help you recognize revenue that you know is coming. All right, so much for that complaint. Comments, questions from my colleagues on this financial picture?
Not for me.
I don't have anything.
Well, either they're all wildly satisfied or, Carol, your, your description is eminently clear and therefore not requiring any questions except from somebody like me who's trying to make sure you understand.
Well, I'll make one comment. I can't remember the last time in years that we've had this much information this soon in preparation for the oncoming year. It's clear, it's understood, and we know exactly where we stand. So it's very different from my perspective than what we used to find on the finance committee.
And I will echo that and say thank you for putting this together. It does help to see everything laid out this way.
Well, I agree with you both. I think this is very important and I, you know, it's something that we should be asking the finance director to do. She's been proactive about helping us to find out where we are. I would ask, if it's okay with the other members of the board, that we do forward this memo to the chairs of the school committee and the finance committee, just so they can circulate it to their members.
I concur.
Sure.
Okay, so if you do that, Carol, thank you very much. Maybe you've already done it, I don't know.
I haven't. I will forward it off to them.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I suppose we'll ask you this a couple of months down the road, but we want to continue to monitor this. I think it's the same time we might ask to have a little bit additional information whether or not there's any expenditure, any line item that's going, is reaching a level higher than we might expect. I mean, we already know about the trees and we already.
That's the only one.
Pardon me?
The tree, the trees in the town, that, that is the only one that I'm aware of at this point that is going to have difficulty during the year.
Well, we may have difficulty in the DPW as well because we are borrowing, what is it, 13,000 to 15,000 to fix the street light? Borrowing and reusing money that we are concerned might, you know, we'd have to draw on, we may have to ask for reserve fund transfer later in the year. But other than that, we don't have anything that we see that's, you know, costing us more than we expected. Is that right?
Not that I'm aware of.
That's correct.
Okay. So maybe in the next time we ask you to come, you know, probably January, February timeframe, you could give us some information about any expenditures that we can, we see that might be costing us a little bit of heartburn down the road.
Sure.
I mean, basically, I think it's very prudent for us to do this. I think we're in a, continuing in a year of uncertainty. We were very cautious early in the year and essentially we saved ourselves some money by reducing for the first four or five months of the year. We can't declare victory yet, but at this point, we're holding up pretty well, so. Is there anything from your point of view, either Mr. Kazinsky or Carol Johnston, that in, in the context of additional costs relative to COVID, which we've been able to utilize the COVID CARES Act money, is there any area there where we might be having some problems? And when is that, when is the last time you can submit for reimbursement for that money?
The deadline, the deadline for the use of the funds is December 30th. So any funds currently that we want to utilize for COVID-19 have to be committed by December 30th. Any products have to be ordered. Obviously, the concern here is what happens after that date. If, if Congress does not extend the dates for use of those funds, then certainly there are going to be some costs as we enter calendar year 21 that really do not have any, any places in the budget to, to fund. So that is a concern. And until we hear exactly what Congress is going to do or not do, we, we really are just waiting to see what, you know, what we may have to do moving forward. There's still costs such as extra costs for the board of health, for the nurse. We are trying to stock up within the limits of what the CARES Act allows on PPE and other materials. But having said that, you know, there would be some concern about COVID costs after, you know, into the next calendar year.
Okay. All right. We have a hearing scheduled for seven o'clock. I don't want to get ahead of myself. Is, Mr. American, are you on the, on the line?
He is.
He is.
Mr. Chairman.
What time do we have now, Karen?
I have 6:57. Pretty close.
Seven, it's pretty close. Okay, we have, as the board members know, we have continuing, continuance of stormwater management and land disturbance, stormwater management permit and land disturbance permit hearing for a building project, which is to occur on the property of the Sparhawk Academy off of Orchard Street. We've had this running for a couple of meetings. And I think what we'd like to do is reopen that hearing and ask Mr. American, he has a suggestion for us. Rather than keep continuing this thing that we perhaps look at his ability to withdraw the application and then resubmit when he's ready so that we can quickly schedule it without having to bring folks back every couple of weeks or every couple of meetings to look at this. So with that, I'm going to take, I'm going to make a motion that we reopen the, the hearing for Sparhawk Academy with respect to a stormwater management permit and land disturbance permit.
Second.
So it's been moved in second that we reopen the hearing. I will call the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Miss Underhill?
Yes.
The motion is carried. The hearing is reopened. And we have a letter from Mr. American dated the 4th where he's making a suggestion here to us. And maybe he could just outline for us what his request is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize for the background noise. That's my dog drinking very loudly. Yes, as you mentioned, we are.
Is that water?
It's water, yes.
Okay, good.
We are revising the site plan at the applicant's request. And rather than kind of continuing to reappear before you ask for continuances, we'd like to request a withdrawal with the one caveat that when we refile, which should be in the next two or three weeks, that the applicant not have to pay your application fee, which is distinct from your peer review fee. You have a $1,000 application fee, which we've already paid. And, and I would just request on behalf of the applicant that they not have to repay that fee when we reapply.
Okay, so there's a request for a withdrawal. Okay, so, uh, there's a request for a withdrawal and, um, without prejudice and a waiver of the application fee for the reapp, the refiling. Any questions, comments from the board members? They're very plastic this evening. I mean, I think we can't, it's one of these other budget items. In any event, alright, so, um, with that, I guess I would, uh, procedurally try to close the hearing and then we vote on it, or do we just do it during the hearing? I think we can probably just do it during the hearing.
You could do it during the hearing, yeah.
Right. So I'd make a motion that the, uh, board accept the app, the withdrawal request for the Sparhawk and, um, also, uh, vote that upon reapplication, um, the one thousand dollar application fee be waived, given the fact that it's already been paid.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to, uh, accept the withdrawal and to waive the application fee for the future refiling. I will call the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. So thank you very much. Now I will make a motion that we, uh, close the hearing.
Second.
So it's moved and seconded to close the hearing. I'll call the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. So we look forward to the refiling and moving quickly through it.
Thank you. We appreciate your patience on this.
Thank you.
A good evening.
Good evening. Okay, um, we've been moving quite briskly, but I'm sure we'll come up against something that wasn't good on the trail here. Um, we have a 7:15 appointment, uh, regarding the community electrical aggregation, uh, proposal or program. I would like to wait on that until 7:15 because it's an item of some interest that I, I know has created some comment in members, among members, members of the community. So just to be respectful of those who might want to tune in at 7:15, maybe we can move to, uh, an item. Um, this would be item 20-280. This item is about review and approval of an IT intermunicipal agreement and also an IT update based upon some other, uh, developments with respect to, uh, delivering the IT support in the future. So I'll, I'll start with Mr. Gazinski. If you could just, uh, outline for us the intermunicipal agreement component here. Um, certainly, Mr. Germain, as our IT director, you can chime in and then also, uh, inform the board about the other developments that have been happening in terms of finding efficient ways to, uh, deliver this important service to the town.
Excuse me one minute, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I see Mr. Clocko on the line here. Mr. Clocko, I don't know if you were here for the DPW waiving of the fees, but they already did that. Oh, we can't hear you because you're muted. I'm sorry. You're certainly welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but I wasn't sure if that's what you're here for.
Uh, no, thank you very much. Um, I will let you go on to more important business. Uh, thanks for attending to this. Uh, we all appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Wayne. Sorry about that.
Mary for keeping us. It's so easier if you can see people in the room, isn't it?
Yes, I think that, yes.
They will come, I'm sure. Okay, IT, Mr. Gazinski.
Thank you, Mr., yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as the board is aware, we've been on a, a journey, um, of some time to bring on some IT, um, in-house paid professional assistants, um, to, uh, take the burden of, uh, of selectmen Germain a little bit. Um, so we have made some great progress over the past several months. I've been in discussions with the, uh, town administrator and the town of Norfolk in regards to the sharing of, uh, an IT professional. Um, in your packet is, uh, intermunicipal agreement, um, uh, the form of which has been approved, uh, by town council and was actually, um, uh, approved by the Norfolk selectman, uh, last week, Board of Selectmen. Um, and we do have the funding necessary in the current, uh, fiscal year budget to, uh, pay for this position for the remainder of this year. Um, we, uh, recommend that the board vote to approve the agreement and to authorize the chair to execute the agreement on behalf of the board. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have. There's a few items that we're still working out the details on. Um, that would be the, um, the pay level for the position, although we expect that to be somewhere in the range of 75,000 to 85,000 dollars per year. That would be the, um, the total salary cost, which would be, um, shared, uh, between the town of Norfolk and the town of Millis. Um, and we will come back to the, we would come back to the board at a later time for final approval, uh, of those amounts. Um, but, uh, the basis of the, of the agreement would be that the town of Millis would be the host, uh, community. Um, the town of Norfolk actually has a, a full-time, um, IT director already. So this position would be split, um, in such a way that, uh, the person here would be the IT director here, but they would be, uh, an IT assistant over in the town of Norfolk. So, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has. We're hoping to be able to move forward with this. Uh, advertise, uh, a position, um, by the end of this month and hopefully have someone on board during the month of February.
Okay, great. So can you just, for my benefit, um, just explain the roles of each of the communities in the hiring process and then the supervision process?
Right, so the hiring process would be, uh, jointly managed. Um, it would be the, uh, it would be run jointly with myself and the town administrator of Norfolk, um, of course with the assistance of, uh, other individuals, um, within the towns. Um, and the final, uh, ratification and approval of the individual, um, again, would be, um, approval by the select board here as well as the town administrator in the town of Norfolk.
Person, based upon your recommendation, and we would share that person's, uh, time and effort and whatnot with Norfolk based upon the agreement and the intermunicipal agreement.
That's correct. So that all the costs would be shared proportionally, um, not just the salary, but the, um, benefit, all benefit costs of the position. Um, and obviously it wouldn't have an impact on the purchase of hardware and software and licenses that would be paid by each town for, for the, um, structure within each community.
Okay. Any other questions from, uh, Mr. Germain? I mean, is it from your point of view, as the IT director, as a, or how would you view this?
I think it's an, excuse me, I think it's an excellent way to proceed. It benefits both towns. In the case of Norfolk in particular, that gives them essentially two people so that if one's on vacation or not available, the other one can take over. It also gives them the benefit of some of the things we've done in this town to benefit from as they progress in their changes that are taking place. It gives us the benefit of the fact that they have somebody in IT who could potentially help us in a time of an emergency, but more important, gives us a full-time person, but we don't need somebody every day of the week kind of thing. It gives us somebody who's there part-time, but assures us a continuity that we presently don't have with a part-time person on board.
Okay. Um, and can I ask, this is going to be a question that's not well articulated, but I'm, I, what I'm trying to get at is are the operating environments in the two towns similar? Um, um, because I, I guess I'm, in our, inarticulately try to say that if I'm going from a Dell to a Mac across the street, it's not going to go so smoothly, but I know that's the wrong way to ask the question. I mean, is it easy enough flow back and forth that somebody doesn't have to use a different alphabet between the two places?
Let me see if I can try to answer that. The answer is, yes, we're both using Microsoft operating systems. Uh, we're both using them in a similar manner. Ours happens to be migrating or migrated out to the cloud, whereas theirs is local at the moment, but they are looking at the cloud themselves. The way in which they operate is quite, quite similar. We're doing the same things. There's a little extra knowledge required to manage it in the cloud, but this gives them an opportunity to learn from that. And as they choose in the future to migrate in that direction, they'll have had an opportunity to learn off of us. Um, the basics of the operation are virtually identical after that. The basic systems operate in the same way. Uh, there are some other interfacing issues that, uh, we've already standardized and they'll learn from. Uh, for a technical person of the appropriate caliber, that's not going to be a big difference or a big difficulty. And it's one that both towns, as a result, are going to benefit from in that regard. So overall, I think it makes a lot of sense for both towns.
Great. Um, is Underhill, you have questions?
I, I know it sounds crazy, but I actually don't.
No, it's because you probably understand it when I didn't, but in any event, okay.
I need one other comment, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Gazinski, do you mind if I mention the most recent conversation I had with another town at this?
No, please, please go ahead.
Well, if I could ask, if I could, it's just to pause that for a second, because what I'd like to do is decide and vote on the agreement, intermunicipal agreement, and then ask you to comment about your further developments that you've had.
Okay.
So, um, I, uh, I will make the motion that the board will vote to approve the recommendation of an intermunicipal agreement between the town of Millis, the town of Norfolk, for the IT, uh, IT director position and authorize the chair to sign the intermunicipal agreement upon finalization.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded. I'll call the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried unanimously. Now, the second item, there's the, uh, um, IT updates with some other developments apparently happening that are benefit, potentially beneficial anyway.
Yeah. I happened to be in a meeting the other day in which I met the fellow who is acting as the IT director for the town of Dover. And although they don't have precisely the system, I apologize, my throat's been a little raspy today, excuse me for just a second, so I don't cough in everyone's face, but the bottom line is that they are very interested in some of the work we've done up to this point, which again, takes us a little beyond where they're at. They're using a Google Cloud solution at the moment, but they're looking at the Azure solutions such as ours. And it turns out that both towns have the same technical support company. So we're going to be talking in terms of ways in which we can reinforce each other and to the benefit of each other, discuss opportunities for working with our mutual support company to ensure that we get the kinds of support we need technically over the long term. It looks very good at this point, but it's just one more opportunity that we have to enhance, if you will, our entire structure for how we're handling IT today and in the future.
Well, terrific, I mean, um, anything that can help us is, is a good thing, right? So you're, they're using the same out, the same, uh, support company?
They are, and that's something that we're in the midst of discussing right now.
Um, well, look, I mean, it's also easy when it all works well. And when things go wrong, then it's much more noticeable than it was years ago when we were all using typewriters. Or I wasn't using a typewriter, but somebody helped me use a typewriter.
Well, we have some difficulties that our tech support company is trying to overcome even right now. But they've got the word and the message, and let's just say they're putting maximum effort into it.
Excellent. Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Gazinski and Mr. Germain. Um, it's good to hear these developments. I know the board has been looking to make some moves on this for, you know, quite a while now. Um, and it's been going on, not only, well, I've been chair, but when, uh, former selectman chair, Ms. Barnes was the chair, that she was eager to see it get done as well. So it looks like we may be almost there in terms of at least a, a solution that will make sense for us. Thanks all for working so hard. Um, okay, now I'm back on track to 7:15 if I'm not mistaken, at least close to 7:15. And this is an opportunity for, uh, us to hear from Mr. Weiss and Mr. Gibbons about, uh, the rollout of the, uh, EM Power Millis Mass Energy Solution for the citizens of the town. So, um, I will ask, I guess, Mr. Weiss, if you want to start off, or Mr. Gibbons, whichever one of you wants to sort of lead us off. And we do have a, a presentation available. I think, Karen, do you have that?
Actually, I do, but actually Craig is going to share his screen.
Perfect, okay, excellent.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Weiss.
If you can hear me, I'm having troubles with my headset lately. Uh, first, I, I would like, it's Bob Weiss, I'm the, uh, uh, energy manager for the town. Uh, and I would like to thank, uh, Millis' Energy Committee for six years of hard work and diligence and perseverance and research and interviews that it took, uh, to bring Empower Millis, our community's energy aggregation program, to fruition. There's Kathleen Streck, Tom O'Connell, Tim Farrar, uh, John Berry, Chris Jackson, our illustrious, uh, chair, Craig Gibbons, and also our town administrator Gazinski and select board vice chair, Pete Germain, who, uh, all of whom have contributed to this. Uh, I'd like to introduce the Energy Committee's Chair, Craig Gibbons, who will introduce Empower Millis, uh, our aggregation program to the board and to the community. So thank you.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you, Bob. And, uh, thank you, Bob, for all of his support in making all this happen. Uh, as Bob has said, it's been a while in the making, uh, and a lot of that was based on us being patient with getting to the right conditions to provide favorable, uh, opportunities to, to Millis. And it's actually inclusive of both Millis residents and businesses. Uh, so what I'd, what I'd like to do, because even as we use the words, uh, community electrical aggregation, we can appreciate we probably lost 99% of our community in terms of an understanding of what the program is, uh, unless you've been intimately involved with, uh, working through the, the mechanics of making it happen. So for the next few minutes, I'd love to hopefully break down what the program is a little bit, simplify it, uh, so people can understand it a little bit better, but then talk about the benefits and, and really the reason why we set out to, to have such a program. Uh, and then talk about what opportunities or options are available, uh, as we've put together the program Empower Millis, uh, our community. And then lastly, make sure that people are clear on how they go about getting additional support, information, really figuring out the best choice for themselves, uh, and, and how to make sure that they're, they're signed up for the program that makes sense for their, their, their home or business. Um, to do that, I'll, I'll walk through a few slides, so I'll take a moment here and just share those up, uh, and hopefully they will arrive on your screen momentarily.
There you go.
Are you guys able to see that okay?
Yes.
Fantastic. So, um, with that, let me, let me dive right into breaking down what a community electrical aggregation program is, uh, to get started. So what it is, alright, is a, a program that really allows towns, cities to bundle the electricity needs they have, uh, and go after really a bulk purchase of the electricity for their community, uh, which often has pricing advantages. So when you're buying as a group, you can usually get a better price than if you're trying to do that as an individual. Uh, and also not only get a better rate, but hopefully get that rate for a longer term. Um, we'll, we'll talk about it a little bit more in a moment, but for those that don't know, lecture- electricity prices go up and down throughout the year. Uh, it actually goes up and down every six months for residents and small businesses, uh, and goes up and down every three months for larger businesses. So this program is focused in on using the, uh, the buying power of the community to get a better price and to get better price stability as the fundamental purpose of these programs. It's good to know that we're in good company. So this is not a bleeding edge thing. This is not something that we are embarking on as, as the first. Uh, this has been done for years and there are actually over 140 cities and towns in Massachusetts alone that have these programs active, uh, within their communities. So we're, uh, we've been able to actually look at the lessons learned from folks that have come before us to try to put together the best program for Melis, which has been an advantage to us as a community. Uh, and there's also a legal precedent for this. We had to go through state agencies and operate under these mass general laws to not only assemble the program, but make it available and follow the guidelines, uh, that are mandated by putting these types of programs together. So we're talking about electricity supply and really exercising some of our options for better pricing and stability as consumers of electricity. Uh, so to break that down just a little bit further, uh, and please, by any means, if I hit a topic that is confusing or isn't clear, feel free to pause or stop me, I can, I can clarify as we're on the slide, happy to do so. But we'll break down how electricity actually is delivered to your home to explain this just a little bit further. So electricity is delivered to your, I should say, home or business, uh, through a few steps. Uh, and one is that the electricity is created or generated, as, as you can imagine. We call that the energy, uh, electricity supply. Uh, and there are a number of things that we have choice about with the supply. How it's generated, that price, uh, rating, uh, and just what kind of mix of electricity we want in, in what we get in our, uh, in our building, our home or our business. That's the electricity supply. That's something we have choice in, and that's what this program focuses on. The thing that we don't have as much choice on is how that electricity gets from where it's created to our home or business. And that's what we call the delivery. And, and that, uh, for our purposes is Eversource. And you can think about the people that own the, the poles and the lines and things that allow electricity to travel, uh, to our community. That's Eversource. Uh, and so as part of this program, Eversource is not going away. It's not changing. If you have an outage or any kind of problem on your electricity bill, you still pick up the phone and you call Eversource. So that and how you interact and get support for your electricity, that's not changing. It's really just the supply, how it's created and, and what kinds of options we have in that supply. That's the piece that this program focuses on. How you may most common, oh, sorry, did somebody have a question? Okay, I'll keep going. Um, how you most, may, uh, may most commonly be familiar with this is through your electricity bill. So your bill has a few pages with it. The first page will have a couple of fees right at the top. It'll say supply, then it'll say delivery, and there'll be a fee for each part of that. And so what we're trying to affect is the supply number that you're going to see on that first page of your bill. And the details around how that, uh, electricity is supplied are broken down a little further on page two. Uh, and I've drawn a few arrows here so you can see a total for the electricity supply, which is that upper arrow. Uh, and see what kind of, the summary amount. And then just below that, it will tell you who's supplying your electricity. Uh, and then the rate you get, and the rates are determined in kilowatt hours. So at the end of the month, you've used so many kilowatt hours and you pay a fee for every kilowatt hour you've used. So both your total kilowatt hours used and the rate for each kilowatt hour is, is noted on the bill in detail. And that's the piece we're going after. We're trying to get a better rate there and we don't want that rate to go up and down as it does today with everybody's, uh, electricity bills. Now, what it's showing here too is, is a little bit about the change on your bill. So today, your bill, uh, if you are in the Eversource Basic Service, you will see something that's listed here on the right. Supplier is Eversource Basic Service Fixed. You are enrolled in the Basic Service. That just basically means you signed up for Eversource and you did nothing else. They're just delivering your electricity, nothing else done. If you don't have that, some people may have actually contracted independently for a different rate, different supplier. You may see something different. But if you're in the Eversource Basic, you're going to see the description of supplier, Eversource Basic Service. What we're doing as part of this program is getting a better rate and that supplier will change because that's the supplier that's going to give us that better rate. So there's a couple of things you'll see. You can look at your bill today just to understand this further. And then in February, when you get your first billing under this new program, you should see these details updating the Empower Melis program as your supplier and a new rate. I'll break this down a little bit further so that we can talk about some of the benefits in a moment. Yeah, I'll, I'll keep going here. And I, I should pause for one second to say, uh, the program is going to help people automatically enroll if you are currently an Eversource Basic Service customer. Uh, and so that's why this slide is probably a little bit more, uh, important for some folks. If you're not sure what your program is today, take a look at your bill, see what it says, uh, and, and see if it says that Eversource Basic Service Fixed. Those are the folks that are going to be, uh, eligible immediately for, for this Melis Empower Program. So why would we go after this supply, uh, pricing and stability? Those are some of the benefits, but, uh, it's, it's really threefold. So the first is when I go to try to buy things as a group, I generally get a better price. And that holds true for how your electricity is supplied. So again, if you try to go, and you can today, go negotiate with your supplier, try to get a better rate, try to change something about how your electricity is supplied, you can do that. But very probable that you will not get as good of a, an electricity rate as we have by buying as a community. So buying as an entire town. So that's the first piece. We believe we can get a more competitive price for electricity by buying as a group. Uh, and that's something that holds true with the current rate, uh, which I'll, I'll show you, I'll show you in a moment how you can see those rates. But right now, we have a more competitive price through this program than Eversource Basic is offering its customers. So that's the first major benefit. The second one is coming back to fluctuations in electricity pricing. Uh, if, again, if you're a resident or small business, your price changes twice a year. Uh, and that's tied to some seasonality and changes in demand. So your price can go up, your price can go down. That happens a minimum of twice a year. And if you're a larger business, your rates could change quarterly, so four, up to four times a year. And so that's depicted here in this middle, uh, portion with the blue lines going up and down. That is what happens today as an Eversource Basic customer. And that happens for everybody that is in that, uh, Eversource Basic Program. This Empower Melis Program will actually not only get you a competitive rate for your electricity, but also create a stable price for that electricity for a period of three years. So you will not be subject to that up and down and trying to understand how much your electricity bill is going to cost month to month based on changes in the market. You can, assuming you use the same amount of electricity, you can predict what your price is going to be for your electricity for the next 36 months. So it is electricity pricing stability for the supply of your electricity. And then the third piece here is really trying to combine these first two benefits, strong price, consistent rate or stability with more options. So how your electricity is actually produced and, and creating options for you to choose from that. So today with the Eversource Basic, they determine how your electricity is produced. They have to abide by certain state guidelines, uh, with how much, uh, the, the mix of electricity that's provided. But they don't have a number of options as we're providing in the Empower Melis Program for you to choose how much of your electricity, uh, comes from renewable energy, uh, which is a big part of the benefit here too. So renewable cleaner energy, energy that doesn't have the harmful emissions to our environment. Uh, and by, by giving you options that have additional renewable energy in them, we're also actually helping, uh, the future state of energy, uh, or electricity, uh, supply by helping to fund other, uh, plants and other companies to develop more and more renewables. So longer term, we're helping support more renewable electricity supplies. Uh, and so those three things, one more time, better pricing when we, when we buy as a group, pricing stability, so we're not subject to those constant changes in electricity prices every year, multiple times a year. We get one rate for three years. And consumer choice. You can choose how your electricity is created and delivered to your home or business. With that, let me break down these choices a little bit more because this is where it starts to exhibit some of the options you'll have uh, as a, a participant in this program. I'll pause here for a moment because I've just gone through a number of things. Any questions so far on what the program is intended to do, focus on, or some of the benefits? Okay. So let's talk about these choices. Uh, and, and I'll explain in a minute how we've been communicating some of these choices and, and the tools you'll have to, to interact with, with this program. So what we've done is created four choices for you as part of the Empower Melis Program. There's actually a fifth option, which I'll explain as well. But first and foremost, if on your bill you have that Eversource Basic Service today, you don't need to do anything else to automatically be enrolled in the Melis Regular Option uh, of these, uh, of this, uh, program. And what that is, is basically, uh, uh, and, and I'll pause for a minute here to explain this, this mix of renewables. Your electricity bill today is required by law in Massachusetts to have approximately 20% of the electricity supplied by renewable sources. So sun, wind, water, so renewable non-emissions, they call it Class One, uh, renewables. So any bill you have, or excuse me, any provider you have by law has to provide at least 20% plus or minus, uh, the electricity through renewable sources. And so what we have here is in the Melis Regular Program, we have that baseline, but we're also increasing the amount of electricity, uh, from renewables in that plan by an additional 5%. So you have the minimum required plus 5%. That's the Melis Regular and that's the default plan. If you're on the Eversource Basic, you will get that plan if you do nothing else. Now, if as you think about that, you would actually like to increase the amount of renewables to go further and get more of your electricity supplied through those renewable energy sources, we have two more options for you. We have a Melis Green Option, which actually increases your renewables by 50% over that minimum standard by the state. Or 100% of your electricity provided by renewables. There are differences in these rates and I'll explain in a moment how you can see those differences. But based on how you would like to receive your electricity or how you would like it created and supplied to you, you have options there from the Melis Regular, which is the default, where you can opt in or elect into the Melis Green or Melis Green Plus. You also, if adding renewables to your electricity supply is of no interest to you, we will also offer a Melis Basic Program, which is similar to today in that it provides the minimum standard, uh, based on state law in terms of renewables, so right around that 20%. The fifth option, which is, is actually not an option in the program, it's option, it's actually an option to get out of the program, is what we call opt-out. So if none of these options, and as you dig into the rates and things, none of these are making sense for you, your home, your business, they just don't make sense for you, you have the opportunity to, to come out of the program entirely and go back to the Eversource Basic or pursue your own plan with, with the supplier. So the options are fourfold with that extra. You can get the defaults, which is an additional 5% of renewable electricity. You can get Melis Green, which is 50% more renewables, where you can get all of your electricity through renewables. Or go with the minimum statement, uh, mandate of, uh, around that 20% through Melis Basics or opt-out. Now, I'm going to come off this slide for a minute because I want to show a little bit about how you're going to get information to help you determine what the best choice is for you. So let me go ahead and stop sharing for a moment and hopefully, oh, did my screen detach or, let's see here, can you guys see me?
Yes.
You can, okay, let's see here.
You're frozen, but we can see you.
All right, let's see here. I'm going to try and restart my video. I have a few visuals that I'd love to show you if it lets me. Let me start explaining them and hopefully my video will, uh, will come back here, so. Try one more thing here. Should kick my kids off, uh, Xbox or whatever they're on. All right. There's a couple of things that should, should have outlined what your options are. Let me try this one more time. I'm going to switch to a different camera that may be a little less banned one. See if that works. Anything yet, can you guys see? Okay, fantastic.
New anyway.
You can see me, okay, that's fine. Yeah, I want to show a few things that, uh, that were mailed out that may be helpful for people understanding how to weed through these, these different options I just explained. Um, so the first thing is if you are a Melis, uh, excuse me, an Eversource Basic Customer, within the last month, you should have received a postcard that was starting to inform you. And can you guys see that okay? It's a little hard probably to read, but should have received a standard sized postcard that announced the program coming. Uh, announced a website that would give you a source to get some more information and start to, to learn more about the program. As well as a phone number you could call should you have additional questions or, or require additional support. So really just a, a postcard to announce that this program was coming. Now, if you didn't get this postcard, that's okay, don't worry. It, it just may mean that you're not currently enrolled in the Melis, excuse me, the Eversource Basic Service, which again, check your bill and see where that, that, uh, electricity supply is coming from. If it doesn't say Eversource Basic, it means you're not enrolled in that default program. It doesn't mean that you can't participate. It just means that you'll need to understand what your current program, uh, conditions are and when and where you might be able to opt out of that program and join this program if you're interested. But all Eversource Basic customers should have received this postcard with some information that would help you get more details about the program. That was the first piece of communication that went out. The second piece of communication went out from Constellation Energy. So this is probably going to be even harder to read, but I'll walk you through what's on it. This is a mailing that followed the postcard, uh, and included a number of details about the program. Uh, and if you, if English is not your first language and you need to get, uh, this letter in another language, there are 26 other languages you can have this letter provided in. So just noting that in case, uh, you would like some different information or a different format. Uh, so on this letter, what it's outlining is that this program is drawing out. If you do nothing, you, and you are part of the Eversource Basic Program, you'll be enrolled in this Melis Regular Option, which is an additional 5% of renewables over what you receive today in a basic program. It will also tell you if this is of no interest to you and you are not interested in these, uh, the, the competitive pricing that we're getting, the stability or these additional options, you can opt out of the program entirely. And it will, it, it outlines here a, a few different things. One is going to the website, empower, uh, empower.melismass.gov, uh, to get more details and opting out there, calling the phone number they've provided. Or third, there should be in this same letter, an opt-out card, which is specifically for the purpose of saying, I do not want to be part of this program. And so that's something that, uh, they've also provided a prepaid envelope for. But if you do not want to participate in the program at all, you fill this out, you put it in the envelope, you send it back. Pulled out of that program and returned to the Melis Basic. I keep saying Melis Basic, uh, the Eversource Basic Program. Also on this, you'll see some of the benefits I've outlined this evening, uh, repeated on the first page. You'll also see the fact that, uh, once again, if you do nothing, you will be enrolled automatically in the Melis Regular Program. But if you would like to choose to go to the Melis Green Program, excuse me, option, or the Melis Green Plus Option, or regress to the Melis Basic Option, you'll have to take action. And there's both a phone number as well as the opportunity to go to the, uh, empower.melismass.gov website to elect an option other than Melis Regular, which again, is what you'll be enrolled in automatically, uh, if you do nothing else. The timing of this, uh, oh, I should note a couple of other things. The timing of this, this program starts, by the way, which I failed to, to, uh, bring attention to. It starts after your first meter reading in January of 2021. So this program is about to roll out. After that meter reading, that next period of electricity use, it will, you'll be enrolled in the Empower Melis Program if you do nothing else and you're currently on the Basic Service. So what that will look like to you on your bill, there's some details on the backside of this letter that outline each one of the options, the Melis Regular, Melis Green, Melis Green Plus, the Melis Basic, the rates associated with each, as well as giving you the current rates, uh, rates for the Eversource Basic Program. So you'll be able to see the new rates that we've been able to procure that will lock, be locked in for three years, as well as the current rate for the Eversource Program, which currently you'll see that the Eversource Basic Program is higher than the default program, the Melis Regular Program in terms of rates, uh, that, that we're starting here in January. So we'll give you all the rate details, the different programs, uh, excuse me, different options, and give you some more, uh, information on how to elect the proper one for you. Again, this, this letter has all of the details that you're going to need to understand these options a little bit better uh, and make the right choice for you, whether it's going with the default Melis Regular, opting out, or choosing another option within the program. Uh, the other source that's going to be helpful to you is the, uh, the website. Actually, let me go back to the, uh, the PowerPoint. me go back to the PowerPoint for a moment here. There's a couple of sources that will also be helpful to get some support here. Sorry, folks, I've lost track of where my PowerPoint went, so bear with me. I can talk through it here if it doesn't show up where, oh, there we go. Okay, let me share it up again.
If I could just interject for a second, it does look like we are receiving a couple chats with some questions, so maybe we can take a look at that after.
Certainly, yep. So let me do this, I'll go ahead and hopefully you still see the, okay, well, it's in a different mode, but I'll walk through what you're seeing here. So actually, I'll, up here, there we go. The these various options outlined in the letter, but also are going to be available on a couple of different sources for you in terms of ongoing information and support. The website, which was referenced a few times, empower dot millismass.gov, provides all of this information, provides some background for the programs, talks a little bit more about cleaner energy, but also gives you the opportunity to interact and change what option you're elected in or opt out entirely. You can also, if all this isn't making sense, or you'd like to ask some more questions to a human being, you can go ahead and call this support line, and it will walk you through what your options are and help you understand the program more fully. And if those those two sources aren't providing the information you need, you can always reach out to Bob Weiss as the Town Energy Manager as well. So with that, let me go ahead and get to the important pieces, which are answering the questions that people may have. So I'm going to pull up the chat here, and let's take a look.
Craig, if you like, I can answer, there was one question, actually, two questions from the same person. And she did not receive any anything about about the program in the mail, and I was going to say, it's probably because you have already have a third party supplier. And then you said that your supplier is Green Mountain, so that that pretty much answers that. But you asked if you could still join the program if you have a a third party supplier. And my suggestion is to read the contract that you have with the third party supplier. And that's because you, there may be a withdrawal fee that they they would charge you for getting out of it. You can join anytime you want, generally. So that's not a problem. We cannot guarantee that when you join, if you join after the first of January, we can't guarantee what the rate will be, it could change by then. But if you already have a third party supplier, check your contract. You can always give me a call in the morning if you want to go over the your contract with me. But for the most part, if you're locked into, if you're in a contract, see if you are locked into it before you join the program.
Bob, also. Want to give her your phone number?
My phone number is the 508-906-3742. That's that's my direct phone.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick comment. We, for example, have a third party supplier. It's important to check what the ever source price is going to be versus what your third party is offering also. In our case, it's about a penny less. But the point is, before you opt out, which may be beneficial to you to do so, if you're already in a third party, you may want to check the two rates and verify that it makes sense for you to opt out.
Excellent point, Mr. Germaine. And I guess just on that point of, it is a no obligation program, so if you're not enrolled in it automatically, you can, you have the opportunity to enroll later, and that can be at the expiration of your current arrangement if you have one. As Mr. Germaine said, you should pay attention to what those rates are and what they look like for for the terms you have in other programs, just to make sure that you're getting the best program for yourself. But if you don't, if you're not in the program, you can opt in later. If you are enrolled in the program, you can opt out as well. And if at any point you are in the program, have a particular option, and want to move to another option, you can do that as well. The only thing that occurs there is naturally, there's a billing, or if it's not natural, there's a billing cycle lag where they would update your option, and then on the subsequent billing cycle, that new option would be reflected. So it's very flexible from that standpoint. If you are enrolled in it, you can move your options, opt out at any given point in the future. We've tried to, and through the preparations for this program, make sure that the the program is providing the best potential benefits to the community, and therefore, even as we see now, the rate you have, even with additional renewables as this program rolls out, is better than what the ever source basic program is going to offer you. So that's the Millis regular in comparison to the ever source basic program. But tremendous amount of flexibility, and if you forget after tonight what your options are, I would encourage you to go to that empower mill, excuse me, empower dot millismass.gov website. It has a video that explains these options in a little more detail, but tremendous amount of information. It will also be updated as the program continues to continue to show the program rates, as well as show changes in ever source pricing, so you have that as a source to compare. Thank you, Aaron.
Aaron, any questions you would like to pose?
I don't have any questions. I do want to say thank you for doing this presentation. I think that that I think it's very helpful. I'm somebody that typically, well, never in my adult life have I tried to look at rates. I just have electricity and I pay for it. So this is, this is very interesting to me, and, you know, certainly, I'm certainly not going to argue with saving some money. So I definitely appreciate all the efforts.
Excellent, thank you.
Certainly, there's been a tremendous amount of work done by the team to pull this together and to offer to the citizens of Millis. And that being said, certainly, there are also folks who have received this and they're saying, what's this? So I would urge them to look at the material. I have it in my hand, right at our house, because obviously, without knowing what we're doing, we had never source basic. So what we're presented with, of course, is an option, so I understand it. Once I get this in the mail and I understand what it is, I can do nothing, in which case I will be enrolled in the Millis basic plan, which will reduce my rates from what I'm paying currently to ever source. Or I can opt out if I want to stay with ever source, or I can select one of the three or the four other options which make bearing uses of green energy in terms of, you know, my own situation. So I think that when people get something, they get a little bit of what's this? And I think what you've done tonight is explain to them as best we can, that it is complicated, but it isn't that complicated, it's fairly simple. Where the complexity comes, it seems to me, is if you're already using a third, another provider, then you have another series of decisions that you have to make and some more analysis that you have to do, which we really can't do for you as the aggregator, because we don't know what you're paying currently. I just want to make sure that everybody understands also, if I understand this correctly, the rate you're showing for ever source is the current rate that I would expect to pay on my January bill. That rate is going to change, most likely it will change one way or the other for six months from now, is that right?
Correct, yes. So it is, it is the rate that we've shared for ever source and the rate we've shared for the program. The ever source rate is going to be constant for six months, as well as, well, ours remains constant for 36 months, but the ever source rate is subject to change in six months' time, and that will happen six times over the course of the program, the Empower Millis program.
But the the Empower Millis program will be the constant rate for the three years, and the, if you were using the ever source basic, it's going to fluctuate, but it could go up or could go down, because you showed that in your slide, it's possible that their rate could, over that period of time, for some period of time, go below the rate that the Empower provider is charging, is that right?
That is correct, that's a possibility.
So there's, there's risk here, there's some risk. Those of you who believe that energy prices will go down, then you should probably decide to stay where you are. Those of you who would like to remove that risk, this is certainly an option that you should consider. But again, those of you who have received this and said, what is this? We're trying to provide as much information as we can, as many sources of clarification as as we can. And we're trying to, as a, as a community, bring you the opportunity to have some stability in your electric cost, as well as potentially reduce that cost over the next three years. And also the opportunity to look at some individual commitment to a green energy solution. So I think that's important for folks to know. Do we have any sense, either Bob or Craig or anybody, what percentage of the users in town are actually ever source folks?
So, yeah, I think the majority will be ever source customers, but in terms of, yep, but in terms of, are you thinking more about the basic service, how many folks are immediately eligible, or?
Yeah, I mean, those who are immediately eligible, or stated a different way, those who will be automatically enrolled in the Millis basic plan. What percentage of our energy, our homeowners, are in that category?
You know, I think around 2,000.
Shouldn't say basic, should be Millis regular.
I think around 2,000, 2,100 mailings went out.
Yeah.
So, and I don't know what the percentage of, so that's, what, about 60% of the homeowners and plus the businesses? Imagine 60, 70% of the folks in town are probably ever source basic users right now.
So the way we look at this, at least for the next six months, if you decide to simply go with the Millis regular by default, we can provide you with some cost reduction on your electrical bill. That's that we know.
Correct, that's what we know today.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So I shared my screen because I just wanted people to see the actual homepage of the website here, where we have put information, and if you just click on it, go to the website at millisma.gov, there's more information, again, on how to contact people and to see the actual letter, so that's another place to get some information if they need it.
Thanks for putting that up there, Karen.
You're welcome.
I see it's actually second to Santa Claus, though.
Well, you know.
Just very quickly, I see that Maggie has posted a comment in the chat here. So Maggie, ever source will continue to be who brings the electricity to your home, but they are delivering it from Green Mountain. And so in this case, what we're doing is is changing that Green Mountain portion of your bill to Constellation. So it it still means that you're, you have a current program that, or an alternative program other than ever source basic, so you'd still need to contact and learn what the terms of your arrangement with Green Mountain are.
Could I ask you again to, you said earlier, but I want to make sure people are hearing this particular message, because obviously, all of us throughout town and throughout Massachusetts, you know, with respect to service delivery, to storm interruptions, to, you know, downed wires and all those types of things. As I understand it, this program does not change who's obligated to trim the trees, or spring the wires, keep them up, right? It's ever source.
That is correct. Absolutely correct. So the, if you want to think of the people that own the poles and the wires, it's still ever source. You have an outage, you call ever source. You have a problem with your bill, you call ever source. Ever source is still your point of contact for your electricity. It's only the program that we give you additional contact information for.
We have any idea what percentage of their customers are using third parties that deliver energy or to generate the energy, just curious?
I don't know.
There are a lot, Jim.
Yeah, the point is, there are 140 communities in Massachusetts alone already doing this for their communities, let alone people who've selected other suppliers.
Correct.
Okay, any other comments, questions from either the folks on the line or from the my colleagues?
Questions for me.
Well, okay, thank you very much. I really appreciate your time. And we will, even our next meeting, remind people where they can get information. They do have to, if they're going to opt out, they have to do it by when? The end of the month, right?
About the 28th, I believe, is the date, is the opt out date.
Okay.
So, and you can either, again, you can do that either through the website, or you can, as Craig showed you, how to opt out with the the envelope and the mail back card that was supplied in the opt out letter.
I'd like to make a quick comment, and that is, this is a really good deal for most people. As I mentioned earlier, we've been using a third party supplier for many years, and I can tell you that during the summer, during the heat waves, when we feel like we're funding ever source with everything they've got, it makes a big difference in terms of what you end up paying for your electricity bill. So I suggest that everyone pay attention to this. It's a really great opportunity.
Okay, thank you. And again, Craig, thank you and your whole team and Bob for, a lot of work was put into this to get us to this point, and we appreciate it, and it's nice to be able to offer the community some real benefit that they can, they can enjoy for a number of years to come. So, thank you.
Thank you. If you don't talk about it, have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, the next time we have on our agenda is one that we've also got to spend some time on, which is stormwater abatement and credit policy. The board has held a series of hearings for people who have appealed their stormwater charge. As a result of that, most of those hearings were continued without decision because the board felt it was important to sort of regroup a little bit and talk about the underlying policy here before we move forward on any of these abatement appeals. So tonight, we're going to talk about the issues related to these, the policy, the underlying policies of the stormwater utility, the utility bylaw, the credit manual that implements the credit program under the bylaw, which was adopted by the Select Board and is implemented and administered by the Department of Public Works. Just a bit of history for those of you who would like to be reminded a little bit, the bylaw was adopted by the town meeting in November of 2017. The purpose was to find a way to fund the cost of maintaining our, what we call an MS4 permit for stormwater that flows into the Charles River and the other areas. So it's a mandate that we were required to try to adapt to, not just Millis, but all the communities around us, particularly as an application to communities along the Charles River. And so what we saw was a terrifically, well, a program that was unfolding before us, which was going to cost significant amount of money for us to you to comply with, and we tried to find ways to fund that in a manner that was what we consider to be fair and equitable and reflect the, you know, the stormwater production here in town. So it was approved by the town meeting in 2017. The program was launched after the Attorney General approved the actual wording of the bylaw in 2018, early in 2018. And part of the strategy in rolling out the utility that we adopted back in those, that And part of the strategy in rolling out the utility that we adopted back in those, that year, those years, um, was that we would do everything we can, we could to adequately fund the program, but also to hold the rates down as much as possible. The rates that people would actually have to pay, uh, would hold them down as much as possible. We need to raise the funds so that the town can meet its cost of compliance as well as other related, uh, areas that it had to deal with. And we set the rates in such a fashion that we can create, um, through the collection of the rates, not, uh, a reserve fund that would be required to not only meet the current operating needs of the stormwater utility, but also some capital needs that we knew were coming down the pipe. Part of that policy also was to delay the applicability of any abatements or credits that people would be eligible for so that we could, um, you know, build the fund up. So we set the rates that are, what we consider to be a reasonable rate, uh, across the board. We delayed the implementation of the credit manual and frankly made the credit, the requirements to obtain a credit fairly high because again, we were trying to do is to give the opportunity to create a program that could fund itself. Now, since we implemented this program, the fact of the matter is that, um, the large, all the property, virtually all the property owners in the town have complied with the stormwater utility fee. Uh, it's an obligation to pay. No one likes to pay. But payment has allowed the town to build up this, um, fund so that we can actually implement requirements of our permit and keep the stormwater under control. Fiscal year 2020, I mentioned the fact that we put the, uh, the, the program in effect in 2018. In fiscal year 2020, which was the November 2019 bill, that was the first time that credits were made available to those people who were, uh, property owners, assuming they could meet the criteria that, um, were implemented through the credit manual, which the board adopted and, uh, also provided copies to all the homeowners in town. So that's kind of the history of how we got here. And the fact of the matter is that a large majority of the rate payers have continued to pay the stormwater fee. But there were many, during that period of time, there were also many inquiries and, um, appeals made to the Department of Public Works with respect to whether or not credits or abatements were, uh, available to those particular homeowners. The DPW worked very hard to explain the rules, um, and the large majority of those people who appealed, um, were satisfied one way or the other at the level of the DPW. After a period of time, um, which was a fairly long period of time because the board didn't really, this board didn't act, didn't, um, schedule hearings, we got to the point where all but 12 of the appeals and requests for abatement, all but 12 of them were accepted, um, by the homeowners. Not necessarily joyfully, but they did accept it and continue to pay, um, their, um, stormwater fee. So as, as the process required, these 12 individuals who continued their, to seek their, uh, appeal, appealed to the select board and hearings were held this November to determine how the board would interact or react to their credit requests or their appeals, if you will, from the decision of the DPW. As I said, most of these were continued because it became clear to the board that there were some policy issues that we would like to take some time to talk about before we acted upon those, uh, those 12 requests, most of them anyway. Um, so tonight, what we're going to talk about is the policy issues, not the specific, uh, requests by these 12 people because their hearings will be reopened once we've made our decisions with respect to policy. And then we can, uh, make our decisions for those, those appellantants. Tonight, I'm hoping that the board will take the time to try and figure out what areas of policy need to clarify, um, identify any additional information that we may need so that we can make a decision on those, including any financial impact these decisions might have on the storm, uh, stormwater utility itself. And then get any additional information that we might need to help us make decisions. And hopefully by the next meeting, be able to crystallize those, have all the data that we need and make those decisions. Now there's two, there's also sort of two areas here that we need to think about as a board. And that, that would really be as it relates to the timing of the applicability of these rules or these, any changes we might make in the policy. Um, so there's an impact, no matter what we do, on the, our ability to fund the system. There are, um, considerations that we have to take with respect to the retroactivity of some of these policy changes. But that, even if we decide not to go retroactively, there's still policy decisions we have to make prospectively for the operation of the utility with the continuing, continuing, at least at this point, overarching requirement or at least policy that the stormwater utility is self-funded. In fact, the fees paid by the property owners fully fund the $600,000 or so annual cost that we bear as a community for satisfying the stormwater utility requirements, stormwater requirements both of the Commonwealth, the federal government and our own interest in keeping the streets safe and, uh, secure and passable, so to speak. So that's kind of the way I'd like us to, to discuss this tonight. I would like to offer the opportunity to my colleagues to also say a few things before we get into a little bit more specifics about those areas that we really have to address as a result of the hearings that we, that we held as well as some of our considerations about the program as a whole. So, Mr. Jermaine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have prepared some thoughts, if you will, as a result of the hearings, uh, on what struck me as things that we ought to be considering as we proceed for reconsidering how the policy works. Now, I think we have to understand exactly what you said to start with, which is, regardless of what we end up with, we still have to cover the costs of maintaining the stormwater management as per the guidelines under state and federal law. So nothing we do is going to change that. But my view of what I saw during the hearings is a number of things. Um, and what bothered me first and foremost is trying to establish the guidelines that encourage drainage improvements and better utilization of runoff and how we contain it and so forth. And to have a policy in place that encourages residents in this area and to not make it difficult for them to be, and I want to be careful how I word this, but rewarded for having made the effort to try to do better containment and minimize the runoff and so forth. So some of the points I've looked at, um, deal with such things as encouraging better rainwater runoff containment. Um, I also feel that our focus, my focus particularly at this point is on the private residences, the non-commercial properties. Because when we talk with people, we begin to realize that there is a distinction there between the commercial and the non-commercial, if you will, and the, um, private residences. Um, one of the things we encountered on several occasions when talking with, uh, homeowners was the fact that they needed an engineer to approve what they were, uh, proposing in terms of mitigating their rainwater runoff and proving that in fact, they had taken actions. And in fact, some of it had to do with the fact that what they had done had been done years ago and that was not being taken into consideration. So although they'd spent the money and made the effort to in fact, contain rainwater in underground wells and dispersion areas, because it had been done prior to a particular timeframe, it wouldn't be taken into consideration. And I happen to think that's something that we need to reconsider. Um, that credit should be granted. Um, the, uh, residents should be encouraged to not only meet conditions, but potentially exceed them. And there has to be an easy way, if they've got catch basins or underground wells, and I may not be using all the terms correctly, but the point is they're containing their runoff, to also allow them to be able to say, look, here's photographic evidence or something that I went in there, I cleaned it, it's operational, it's doing what it's supposed to do. And again, I don't see that that was something that was considered and not necessarily wrong. It's just, we hadn't considered it earlier. I'm also concerned that we look at it in terms of the types of residences. Um, one of the things I saw is that there were, there should be a couple of billing options for the residences. One is what I'll call a simple, but I'm not convinced there should be a limit to the number of units involved with what I call the simple residence. To, I think at the moment, we use four units and if you go above that, it's considered some other level. Um, I'm not sure why that was set, but I happen to think that then discourages anyone with larger units who have probably much more runoff to contain from doing anything. Why should I do it if I'm not getting any credit for having done it? So I think we need to rethink the way in which we consider a simple versus some other kind of credit. Um, now, obviously we have to think about what a simple is. And it can't have any very special and large structures on it. Um, maybe a small shed or something there, but, um, it's got to be occupied by the homeowner. A present, a private residence with fewer than six units. Um, there are a whole series of things I think we ought to be considering that I would hope we'd shared, I've got this list to be shared with my colleagues. Um, also here, there's a, we talked about, well, if we give the credit, there should be an annual reapplication. That probably makes sense. But the reapplication should be relatively straightforward and easy. I find that a number of the forms that people had to fill out were ambiguous at best. Used terminology that wasn't clear, sometimes redundant. And overall lacked the clarity necessary to understand if I do this, I should get this. Um, a clearer explanation, I think, is necessary, particularly of retaining facilities versus groundwater processing and so forth. Um, there should perhaps be another category, what I'll call a complex home or residence, which may have multiple dwelling units, may have other structures and may have significantly larger areas of impermeable surface. Um, I'm also thinking that there probably ought to be at least three levels of permeable surface that we're thinking about. One is permeable, second semi-permeable, meaning its use is infrequent. Um, and I'm not going to say per se it's a driveway, but it could be an area like a parking ramp where once a year or twice a year, a vehicle is driven onto it and driven off. But it's certainly not something that's used on a regular basis like a driveway is. And finally, impermeable surfaces such as, uh, roofs, driveways, pavements, uh, compacted gravel, basically heavily trafficked areas or there could be others. I can't readily say that. Um, when I read through the articles, I noticed that Article 3, Section 9. B, we should be looking at that much more carefully and decide if it should be revised with respect to percentage use. Uh, do we care about peak runoff? I'm not sure that we do. Um, I think we need to be encouraging improvements in this area rather than discouraging in the way it's presently described. Um, perhaps the maximum credit should not be based on the number of units, but on the percentage of the total impermeable or impervious area that the people are using and as per Section 9B. I'm just saying, we need to rethink that. That's my view. Uh, quantity of prop, uh, is something that we're trying to encourage the residents to improve, if you will, minimize the runoff from the property. So to me, it looks like we need to define this in a way that again, encourages a better use of the runoff and takes that into consideration. Now, of course, there's the issue of not just quantity, but quality. Uh, we want people to clean their runoff. And again, we ought to have a better explanation of what that means and what it's worth to the homeowner who chooses to do something like that, what it takes to do it and what it's worth to them to invest in doing. Because I think all of these things are part of the process that we have to consider for cleaning our water. Um, I looked at it as some fundamental issues that, um, we ought to consider and choose to modify. These might include such things as some of the basic fees for operating the stormwater enterprise that must be covered regardless of cost. We know no matter what, that we have costs that the enterprise has to cover. So if you grant credits in one area, you're probably going to have to make them up across the board in some other way, whether it's upping the rates for everyone or whatever. The point is, you can't just say, okay, we've granted X amount of credit and that's the end of it. Because if our nut is a particular dollar value, one way or another, we have to meet that on an annual basis. Um, the community needs to be able to understand the bylaw and what impervious area is being charged to the town. I've had a number of questions asked of me of, well, why is the town paying for the stormwater? And this was a decision made by the board some time ago. In essence, yes, it's an indirect cost. But let's understand something. If we don't pay for it as an indirect cost, you're going to get to pay for it as a property owner, as a direct cost. So yes, it's there. It's important to understand that one way or another, you're going to end up paying the fee. It's going to be paid as an indirect or a direct cost. That's something to be considered. Um, and the trade-offs and the understanding, I think, are very important in terms of, the residents need to understand that this is another cost that we as a town have to face. I've been asked many times, well, how come we don't have enough free cash to cover some of the outstanding needs and an obvious one is something like roads? But there are many others that we're trying to cover. And the answer is, we have essentially mandated costs such as stormwater. They're coming down to the MS4 requirements that we have to meet. And it doesn't hurt, I don't think, to try to explain and to offer opportunities for townspeople to ask questions about this so that there is greater clarity. And I won't say greater transparency because I happen to think the board and the committees that have been involved have done a good job in that area. But the bottom line is, it's always possible to offer more explanation and to help clarify for those who want it. Um, and the final thing is to make sure that any bills that go out are as clear as possible as to what the costs are that are entailed, whether it's in units or anything else. What, how did those units get derived? So that the homeowner understands that, yes, there are three units for my roof and two units for my driveway or something like that and some other impermeable surface. So that there's no lack of ambiguity as to why am I getting charged for three units or seven units or 12 units or whatever it is. The homeowner has a right to understand where those charges came from. Anyway, I'm sorry, it's a long discourse, but these are some of the thoughts I've had as a result of our meetings.
Thank you. Aaron?
Um, I have a few thoughts, I suppose. Um, I went back and looked through everything that I had from the credit manual to some of the, um, hearings we looked at. we looked at. And in terms of clarity and transparency, I definitely agree with Mr. Germain that, you know, I was looking at the bills and I couldn't tell how many billing units were being billed on the actual bill. And I couldn't tell how many, you know, how many billing units equal how many square feet of impervious surface. And I just, I think it could be definitely clearer so that at least people would have more of an understanding. I understand the necessity for this and I understand it being another utility. You know, looking at it that way, we have water, we have sewer, we have stormwater. I can, I can definitely stand behind that. I think I'm also kind of interested in, I guess, the bottom line in terms of the amount necessary to fund this utility. What's that comprised of? What are, where do we stand now? What are the risks in granting credits? You know, I think nobody wants another bill. Nobody wants another utility bill. But I do think that there's a difference between some residential situations versus commercial. And I think understanding, probably even overhauling, where we are looking to offer credits. What, something more descriptive. I felt as though we were kind of, you know, the freedom to make our own decisions is good, don't get me wrong. But it would be nice to have, you know, more set in the policy in terms of more straightforward circumstances as to the types of credits when you could get a credit and so forth. I also understand what Mr. Germain said about people doing improvements. I think, I do think having it be made clearer to people that, you know, the cost would have to, it would just, it would have to be a benefit. So personally, my bill was not all that large. I pay it. I'm fine with it. But if I wanted to try to improve my situation, I would definitely want to know what things I should, should be doing, what things I could be doing, how much of a credit could I qualify for? How, is it just going to be one year? Or is it renewable? You know, I do think, especially for the way it's currently calculated with the small user credit versus, you know, a residence that happens to be eight billing units, I definitely agree with not having a resident have to hire an engineer to get something signed off. But I also think we do need to have clearly specified what we do expect. What, I just, I'd hate to leave it too open-ended. I'd like it to be a little bit more set. What am I expecting to see? When am I expecting to consider a credit? So I do think that there's, I just think there's some significant work to do to iron some of these questions out.
Okay, so obviously, we've got some issues that we'd like to, we'd like to see addressed. I guess that one of the things that, of course, comes up initially, which had come up during the hearings, and maybe I was remiss in not making it absolutely clear to everybody, including myself, what we were doing, is that we're sitting here in 2020, almost 2021, and changing the policy. Are you, are we willing to change the policy retroactively so that those who appealed will be given some benefit? And those who decided not to appeal will not receive the same benefit? I mean, that's a real issue, which was brought up several times by our experts and our administrator and our DPW director. And it's actually correct. I mean, I'm not saying one way or the other, whether or not we think that because we can improve it means that we can't improve it. But the question that we face in the short term, over the next, you know, month or so, because we promised to get back to these folks, is whether or not we're willing to restructure these things and then make the application of these rules retroactive to some point in time. And that's a real thing we have to decide. And secondly is, okay, if we're going to make a change and we're going to, even if we're going to make a prospective, how much of an overhaul are we going to try to do? And I'm not suggesting that anybody is not saying something that's valid, because I think they are. But there is only so much that we can accomplish as a community, as a town, that we can actually administer. And we made some choices back in '17 and '18. And I was on the board then, so I'm, you know, responsible for those changes, those things. A lot of these issues were debated. They were debated openly. They were debated in several hearings and open forums. But of course, until you get the bill, you may not participate as actively as you might otherwise. So I do think, you know, from my perspective, what I'm learning over time is, yes, perhaps the small user credit is something that we should think about a little bit more. And that the standard credit, which does create, you know, some additional requirements, maybe in some instances is too onerous. And maybe there's an opportunity for us to bifurcate commercial versus residential. But as Mr. Germain indicated, this always has to be done against the backdrop of the need to raise the money. Because if we create a broad-based credit program, which is, it's good policy reasons to do it. But if we do it, what we will have to do to maintain the fund is to raise the rates. There's just no other way to do it. I mean, if you're solving for $600,000, it's going to be divided by something, right? And that something has to add up to the $600,000 because that's the cost that we have to bear to maintain the program. Now, there's a whole number of things you could do, but I think those are, that's what I think I would like the board to say, "These are the questions we have, and we need the information so that we can make a decision that we believe is fair and equitable." Because if people aren't confident that they're being treated fairly, then they won't comply. And secondly, that we actually fund the program because that's the program that we have to fund. So I am concerned, and I realize that I voted last month for one or two of these things that were, there's a retroactive application. But upon thinking about it, I am quite concerned with a retroactive application of any change in the policy. Because this policy was one that was implemented not carelessly, but with forethought. Now, maybe there's some injustice or inequity that's created, but it wasn't something that wasn't thought about, because it was.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Germain.
In part, I agree. I don't like the idea of retroactive policies or laws putting in, put into place. I think that we have to look at things from the perspective of, there were a few, I will call them clarification issues that were ambiguous at best. And I'll use the individual who presented to us last, who went in and actually put in an underground dispersion system and so on, and was still denied any of the credits. I'm not an expert in how those systems work, so please don't interpret this as I think it's the best way or anything else. But what's clear to me is that individual went to extraordinary lengths to try to meet or exceed the standards that we felt, that he felt had been set and that, under his interpretation, and he is much more of an expert than most of us in this area, should have met the criterias. And it didn't, for whatever reasons, at that point. I think that there's no such thing as a law for which no exceptions under any conditions can be made. That doesn't mean that we want to proceed and say, in broad brush, that any changes we make are therefore retroactive. I don't agree with that. We're going to make, I hope, some changes. And by and large, the policy will be for going forward. And that will be something that I think we have to decide. But that doesn't mean that we can't review what happened and say, "Okay, we see a few cases where we think an exception can be made, for better or worse. And the rest of them, whether we should have made it or not, we're just going to say, 'We're going to move forward from here.' And you have an opportunity to reapply in the future based on the new laws that are going, if we make any, the new guidelines that we put in place." But that would be the way I would look at it. And I know I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not phrasing this very well, but that's what I'm trying to say.
Well, let me ask the board members then. I mean, we did receive from the Kleinfelder folks sort of a, an organizational framework for looking at a couple of issues that emerged from the hearings. And really, they cluster around, you know, the small user credit itself. How do you get it? How do you qualify for it? And is there anything you do that will enable you to get a credit under that program? And whether or not it's this a four-unit maximum to qualify for it? It is actions taken after the utility was put in place so that you're mitigating, you're improving your property rather than just using something you installed before and limiting the credits to one? So that program clearly was one, whether we think it's, you know, comprehensive enough, is fairly, fairly straightforward as to what it, what would qualify for a small user credit, up to an amount. And doesn't specify specifically that you have to grant the full credit, the full one-credit, credit, if you will. But you can do it up to one credit, which really amounts to a four-credit, you know, in a four-unit household, a 25% credit if you give the full credit. So the second one, of course, is the standard credit, right, which is much more complicated. I think we all agree on that. The standard credit creates a lot more obligation on the property owner to not only do the activities, but have independent certification that they're actually doing what they, what they were intended to do, which is to reduce stormwater runoff. And we certainly heard people talk to us about things they've done, but that, you know, in listening to it, it wasn't necessarily changing stormwater runoff at all. It might have avoided a puddle or something on the driveway, but it doesn't prove that stormwater was mitigated in any way, shape, or form, just that some work was done. But we did hear from, you know, a number of people that when we got to the large, or what we call the standard credit, right, that if you're, if you're only qualified, you're only qualified for that basically because of, by the number of units, right? Your standard that you have to meet is much higher and you have to have independent certification of that standard. I mean, that's what the credit manual actually says. So people were asking for abatements, I'm sorry, credits for reasons beyond those, those standards. And clearly, if we're going to make a ruling that grants those credits, there are other people who did not pursue their credit because they were told that they didn't meet the standard. Now, I think we all would agree that it was a complicated thing and there was a lot of paperwork and that kind of thing in trying to implement this. And I'm not trying to defend it one way or another. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get the inquiry into some manageable categories so that we can complete the inquiry, at least for these guys, and then move forward. And of course, the last area really was the definition of impermeable area. You know, are you willing to make some exceptions based upon some additional factors, facts, which say, "Okay, something that looks impermeable," because, again, we just looked at it using GFS, "is in fact not impermeable because it is not being used, it's, it's going to be growth coming over it or something." And so therefore, you could argue that that's not really an impermeable area. Now, again, the standard of impermeable area, which is, which is, which is very much engaged with what is, you know, what is, what worth stone rather than concrete or asphalt, that was an actively discussed area when we created the credit manual. And the decision was made by the board at that time that that kind of area, even though one could argue it's a little bit more, it's not as clear that we would consider that being impermeable. Now, if that's a bad decision on the policy, then we can certainly change the policy. But if we're going to change it and apply it to bills sent out in '19 and '20, then we're going to have to, you know, we're going to clearly be using a lot of money to refund the people because they should be eligible for these things. And there is the issue that you raised, Mr. Germain, and I think we all are thinking about is, clearly, the policy was implemented, which said that if you take action, well, it's really got two, two parts to it. If you take action, or you have taken action on your property prior to the implementation of this stormwater utility, then those actions do not qualify for a credit because the property is already contributing its own level of stormwater runoff. Whether you agree with that or not, that was clearly what we decided to do. And secondly, it clearly says that if the community you're moving into happens to have its, has had to fulfill a much higher standard of stormwater utility, like the stormwater, you know, licenses that we're giving today, it's a much higher standard of stormwater runoff that was going on in those communities, the fact that there is stormwater mitigation in those communities does not qualify you for a credit. It's only if you go above and beyond what you were required to do when the community was built. Now, I'm not saying these are right or wrong decisions, but these were decisions that were taken. And are we at a point now where we want to reexamine those decisions? Because if we do, we are certainly making potentially a fundamental change in the way we allocate costs. I think we're all recognizing that. And we know, we know we're solving for the same big number. The question is, how are we going to do it in a way that people perceive as fair and reasonable?
May I make a couple of comments?
Yes, this is the point of tonight's, to try and get this to a point where we can move forward.
I happen to think that the concept, though well-intentioned, of setting four units as what we call a simple or...
Small user credit.
Small user credit. I don't think, in my mind, makes a lot of sense. I think what we want is something that says, "Look, for private properties that are clearly private, they're not rental, they're not, they're single owners, homeowner, they live there, it's their residence." I think that is perhaps the category we want to be looking at. To say it's based on the number of units doesn't matter whether they have 1,100 square feet or 14,000 square feet. The bottom line is, they're a homeowner. They have a home, their family lives there, they live there. And I think that's the way we ought to be looking at it for those individuals. And they submit based on the same criteria that somebody who has only two or three units would submit. It has to do with the fact they're a single-family dwelling. That, to me, makes more sense. They don't have to go out and hire an engineer, unless they choose to do so. It's up to us to set up what we consider reasonable standards under those conditions for a homeowner to meet to prove that they have done the work. And I'm not saying I know what those are yet, but I have some ideas. So that's one category. Then you get into the more complex, and then you'd be getting into some other categories. So from that perspective, I look at it and say, I don't think it makes sense to cut it off on the small-unit credits. I think that concept is, in my estimation, not the appropriate way to go. Because I also look at it, as I stated earlier, that even if we grandfathered what they've done before and saying, okay, it's very nice that you put in cisterns, wells, pools, whatever they want to call it, storage areas for your water, that was all done before. You're ahead of the game, but we're not going to give you any additional credit for it. I'm not sure we can go back and do that for somebody who did it years ago. I think it opens, if you will, Pandora's box on an issue in that case. But I certainly don't want to discourage individuals who are willing to say, you know, I've got 3,800 square feet of house. I'm willing to invest some amount of money to put in some underground storage for my water and dispersion or whatever the process is to meet some of these mandates. And whether it ends up as one-unit credit or two units or three units. And as you can see, I'm not sold on just saying the max you can have is one unit. Maybe the max you can have is X percent. I don't know, but that's something I think we need to explore. But my fundamental feeling is, all of this is geared toward not just meeting the revenue objective, because we have many ways of doing it, but encouraging the way in which we handle stormwater runoff and the quality of our water in the long term. And if somebody says, look, it's worth, I've got a large property. It's worth two or three credits for me over a period of 10 years to make the investment, and I just want to do it and make me feel good, I think we ought to be encouraging that. As opposed to somebody saying, okay, if they're going to charge me that and even at one credit, I don't care. I'm just going to let it all flow out to the street, which of course is the flip side of that. So I feel strongly that we want to be in the area of encouraging. I will also suggest that perhaps rather than trying to revisit people who have invested in underground dispersion or whatever facilities years ago, kudos to them. They did it. I think it's great. But somebody who did it in the last year with the intent of meeting these conditions and then found it didn't meet them because there was some interpretation of the law that was, bylaw that was ambiguous, I don't have a problem in the world of saying, that's an exception I'm willing to consider for a credit or two or whatever it is we end up dealing with. And based on the existing law, the most it would be, I think, is one credit. And since they're a single homeowner and there's their own private residence, that I think photographic evidence of what they've done and proof that they did it during that time period is more than adequate. So in trying to answer the points that you bring up, which I probably touched upon, but not very eloquently, I think those are some of the concerns and suggestions I have.
Okay, I mean, that's certainly reasonable. I mean, I think what is being thought of, brought out here is, you know, is the bifurcation here between the credit, not the credits, but the proof required to earn a credit, is the right mix residential versus commercial? I don't mean versus, but I mean, you know, create a category that says, look, if you were a business in Mills today and you run a property, right? You're operating your business in a property that has less than four billing units, you're eligible for the small-user credit. If you're a homeowner living on a property that has seven, eight, six, whatever it is, 10 units, you're not eligible for it. You are eligible only for a more stringent program, which requires a lot more proof than, you know, engineering and whatnot. So, I mean, it seems to me if the board wants to consider a residential or single-family home category, if you will, assuming that doesn't, you know, discriminate in some way that we're not allowed to, then we should consider that. That would clearly require a bylaw change, which means we'd have to bring it to town meeting before we could implement it. But if that's what we want to pursue, then it seems to me we need to go back to the drawing board and say, okay, how do we divide all this up? So that, how do we divide 600,000 up? Which is the, you know, the goal, I'm just using this as a number, is kind of what we've been appropriating. Unfortunately, as we all know, we'll probably go up, not down. And that's a different, that's definitely a different system, which is not bad, it's just different. And it might be better. But it's hard for me to justify doing that retroactively. And I certainly wouldn't do it without the same kind of process we went through before about, this is the new proposal. This is what we're thinking of doing. Let's get some further input from folks. Let's hold some hearings. Let's model it out and then, you know, go from there. Now, that doesn't mean that we can, in the meantime, you know, I guess, work on, you know, maybe some, I don't know, clarifications, some streamlining of the current process. Because we're sitting here today, as we know, with folks who have received their stormwater bill in November of 20, who will decide that they would like to appeal it, seek an abatement or seek something. And at this point in time, we have no rationale for treating them any differently than we've treated the ones who applied in 19 and 18, or 20 and 19. So the short-term thing, we got to decide, and again, I'm just putting this out there for this evening, for us to consider and then come back perhaps and understand what it might mean and move forward at the next meeting, which is different from, you know, our decision to say, look, we think we need to reexamine some of the fundamental concepts here, which is a much bigger undertaking. And we'll take more time and we really need to demonstrate to ourselves and to the community that that in fact is a better way to build the mousetrap, I suppose. Is that reasonable to folks or is that? I mean, we're not going to get total agreement on all the elements. We have to begin to think of what, like you said, what direction, what are the key pieces? Let's put them out there. Let's analyze them from the point of view of fairness and the financial impact. Let's get further community input. Let's understand that people think that's a good idea or not a good idea. And know full well that it won't simply be the board deciding on what the credit manual is going to say, but it will be a change in the bylaw, which will be brought to the town meeting and the town meeting will decide, yay or nay.
If I may?
Yes, certainly.
So I agree with you. I think if we were, if I were to try to greatly simplify what things I see as outstanding that I think we should follow up on and then maybe ultimately make some kind of a decision to change in whichever fashion we need to, would be more clarity on the bills and how all of this is calculated. Changing the small-user credit thresholds. You know, perhaps we do do a residential versus a commercial. That piece absolutely just needs to change. I don't think it's fair to ask a typical homeowner to have to go get engineer to sign off on plans. I think we just need to refine what specific actions can get them on the table to be evaluated for a credit. And then, I guess, even broader. So we keep throwing out the $600,000. That's not just for stormwater, right? That's...
That's the stormwater utility. That's just for stormwater.
So we need to make sure that we're making $600,000 from billing for stormwater to cover itself and our requirements in the permit and all the other stuff that comes with it?
Not quite, actually.
Okay.
What we decided, our policy right now is we will utilize the stormwater utility to fully fund all activities related to stormwater maintenance, stormwater compliance. You know, some of it is just to prevent flooding. So it's beyond just compliance, but it's all those kinds of things. There's no requirement that we have a utility which is fully funded by user fees. We could decide to subsidize it some way, shape, or form from the general fund. What we can do is take the user fee and use that for something other than stormwater.
Okay. So just so I understand, and I apologize if this is a silly question, but if we're looking at $600,000 and if currently the expectation is that this is self-funded from user fees, when all these numbers were kind of put together, was anything taken into account? Like, if 600 is the number and we have billed that accordingly, how do we have room to even discuss credits? Like, does this question make sense? I'm really sorry if I'm saying it right.
Exactly what we did.
Okay.
That's why we made the credits so hard to get.
Okay.
We had an assumption that a certain level of credits would have, would be granted and abatements because the property owner met the high standard. So if we lowered the standard, then we'd have to give more credits and we'd have to raise the rates to fund the goal.
I think that's the key point, is that it matters.
Decisions, yes, conscious decisions. And is it time to revisit them is the question.
Right. I mean, we're going, you're going to have to bill for the rates regardless. So if you give a credit in one area, then you're going to have to change the rates overall. Now, granted, if it's one credit to one family period, it's never going to show up. But if what you end up doing is giving out, let's say, 1,000 families apply and we give out 2,000 credits, just as an example. And if our billing was based on 4,000 credits, guess what? I mean, you're going to double the fees to everyone at that point. That's understood going in. So there's no free lunch in this. The reality is, you're going to have to cover it no matter what. So everybody's going to pay something. What you're really doing with the credits is encouraging people to not just invest in our clean water, but to understand that the more they invest, it benefits us all, even though they get a bit of a break because it's going to come back not totally as a credit. You have to then reevaluate what you're going to charge per credit. And, yeah, others will pay slightly more. They pay slightly less, is what it boils down to. But that's the way it works. But that's the way it works, no matter how you slice it. And I think the distinction I'm drawing in all of this is, I understand why we did the single credit. But my feeling is, I want to, I think, I want to see encouraging homeowners to participate in clean water to the greatest degree possible with the understanding, it costs, no matter what. It costs to invest and make it clean. It costs to invest in the enterprise fund. You're not going to get a one-for-one payback. It doesn't work that way. But what you do get is a partial payback that way and a much greater payback in clean water. And that, I think, is the ultimate goal.
And I agree. I think what it, I do think we just, in addition to all the other things we've said, I mean, we just need to rethink or be clearer upon expectations. So you would use the last individual that we had discussed from those hearings. I don't think that person is going to be the norm. I don't think the average person is going to in, has the ability to do this work themselves or will undertake the financial responsibility to invest what would be necessary to do that level of work and mitigation. So the, I think some of the questions are, what, where, what are the standards then? Is that what we're expecting in order to entertain a credit? If this needs to be, if this is the utility and this is the money that needs to go into it, it's supposed to be difficult for people to get credits? What exactly are we expecting?
I think also I go back to something that our chair said, which deals with trying to get people to recognize that this is part of the environment we live in. And that we can't go back retroactively to everyone, including the 12 homeowners or whatever the number was that we reviewed. So my feeling is, although some people may be disappointed, we clearly had a few, what I'll call, exceptional cases where, like our last party, they went above and beyond what I would think is to be expected from the normal homeowner. I can't evaluate whether it's good or bad, but from what I understand, it sounded like it was good. So I look at it that way. And so maybe we make an exception in that case. But maybe we go back to the others and say, you know, we can't just change the law at this stage. Whether it was good or bad, we're not evaluating. We just can't change it at this time. But what we are going to do is going forward, we are going to recommend some changes, but we want to hear from the community and have them participate, as Mr. McCaffrey noted, so that we can formulate some changes that represent what the community thinks and gets them participating and then present it to the town in terms of the bylaw change, if in fact, we feel that that's something we want to do. But I think those are two separate cases. One's dealing with what we have to deal with now.
Yeah.
And the second is moving on and recognizing that's a future.
Well, I do think there are, I agree, there are two areas of inquiry. One area is that we owe these folks a decision. And the other area is, you know, if this board or any board is interested in making some changes, reforms, improvements in the system, that's certainly something that this board has the authority to do as well as the leadership responsibility to investigate. The same would be true. And it's, it is being done slightly different way right now with respect to the sewer utility. And some of our needs to try to address, you know, our sewer capacity problem. And not trying to jump to that and ask for any feedback, but I mean, that's, it's a very similar thing. It comes out in a different way, but it's certainly a similar item. And it remains responsibility of the board to try and look at this ultimately as our sewer commissioners and stormwater commissioners. So if we want to, again, I was trying to get the issues teased out tonight so that we could just think about them for another couple of weeks and then decide next time. And ask ourselves if anything else that we want to actually look at, any additional data, any additional information that we want to look at before we decide either with respect to what we're going to do for prior applicants as opposed to what we're going to do for...
You just muted yourself.
You just muted yourself, Jim.
Was that part of the plan?
We all, the chair, just muted himself and go back. Go back to his playroom or whatever. Okay. All right. So I would, I would suggest that we just ponder it again for the next couple of weeks. We will, I will come back on the agenda. We will decide because we're going to deal with the prior issues. And then we will try to look at, you know, the implications for, you know, what we can do going forward. And as one individual... And as one individual stated, which is a good point, in figuring out going forward, we're not just figuring out, Mrs. Barnes who sent a chat, which even I could see, which means that she did a great job because I can't do anything right. We have more homeowners, we have more homes, we're going to have revenue growth in the stormwater utility as well. All of that reflects not only the credit policy, but the rates. Because if the cost of stormwater management doesn't go up as fast as the number of households goes up, then there's the opportunity, even with the basic rates, make adjustments, not necessarily upward, but downward as well. And we do know that new developments are being built with much more stringent requirements for stormwater management. And I think that, you know, I do agree with the last comment. We are looking for Kleinfeld to participate in our next meeting. I asked specifically, asked that they not necessarily attend this meeting because I wanted this board to have this dialogue around what we think is important. It's kind of like, we're the people who are hopefully the representatives of common sense and the experts will come in and help us tailor solutions in a way that makes sense, reflects the science as well as the, you know, financial obligations. So I would ask that we have Kleinfeld come back, join our meeting on the 21st. As long as we tell them exactly what we want them to talk about, then I think it'd be helpful. Okay. Is that reasonable for the team here, for the select board members? We will come back and we will decide next time.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay? Yeah. Okay. Now, I mean, the next item we have on our agenda is staffing issues. This is something that Mr. Germain has to talk a little bit about, which is kind of really allocation of responsibilities.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to reinforce a concept of how we look at staffing and the management of staffing in the town. And to be very frank, I think it's something that really falls largely under the responsibility of the town administrator. And to that end, I'd like to, if I may, defer to the town administrator to hear his view of how he sees the role of himself vis-à-vis anyone else making recommendations on staff and the usage of the staff. So if that's okay, I'd like to ask him to add some comments here.
Certainly. Mr. Germain, actually.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do think it's important from time to time, just, you know, for the smooth operation of the administration, just for sort of a reminder and a backing from the select board that it is the role of the administration to oversee the personnel and in general, the oversight of personnel operations, stay in that role and that boards and committees in general really have perhaps a backup role to that. But I think what Mr. Germain's point is, and I agree, is that I think maybe a kind of reminder of that from the board, just in general, not pointing at any particular board or committee, but just in general for the other committees out there that may have different roles in different areas of the community that interact with town employees. So hopefully that summarizes it. I know it sounded a little scattered, but I think that's the general point.
If I could perhaps add a comment. I think it's important that we may have as a board some oversight, particularly through our relationship with the town administrator and the way we work with that individual. But it's ultimately the town administrator's responsibility to manage the employees, to manage the workforce, to work with his department heads or her department heads to allocate the resources as he or she feels fit. It's not in the purview of necessarily the board directly, although indirectly it is, and certainly not in the purview of the committees, to get involved in that management process. And to that end, I think it's important to ensure that we clarify that those roles are distinct. And it's that which I was trying to clarify, I wanted to make sure there is no ambiguity there, that he is, Mr. Guzinski is our town administrator, those are his responsibilities. We will be reviewing his performance and so on, and we will be making recommendations to him throughout. But he's the operations person who has responsibility in that area. That's what he's partly measured on, largely measured on, to be honest. And it's not something that the boards really participate in. So those were the comments that I was making.
Well, I, you know, I certainly agree with the proposition that, you know, we are policymakers, policy setters, get some policy input ideas from committees that we've established to help us formulate those policies. Once we've formulated them, we expect town administrator and the town administration to recommend to us the right staff, the right staffing level, subject always to our oversight of the budget, which is why we have departments come to us with their budget recommendations. So I agree with you, certainly agree with you on that point as well. And, you know, we certainly will get some active partnership with the finance committee on the budgets, but none of those committees are establishing the personnel levels, the staffing levels. We're looking for ourselves to be policymakers and we're looking for administration to, you know, create an organization with the right skills and capabilities to deliver on those policies. So I agree with that 100%.
I don't know if we want to have that as any kind of policy, but I think it's important to have at least aired it at this time.
Well, you know, we spent a fair amount of time this year developing policies and whatnot, and we created the board policies. Maybe what I would suggest is we'd ask the town administrator to, you know, paragraph or two, to amend that, the select board policies, guidance if you will, to include this tenement and then it's codified and we make it clear to everybody. Does that make sense?
I would certainly support that.
Okay. Does that make sense for you, Ms. Underhill?
Yes, that sounds good.
All right. So we'll put the ball back in your court, Mr. Guzinski, and we hope to see something from you in the near future.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think we might have skipped over one item, the town hall operating hours and the COVID.
Item 20-283, holiday hour question.
281.
281 is what I'm...
Oh, COVID. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, there's two items here. One is current operations and the other is holiday hours. I apologize.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. So just an update, really an update for the board and then a general recommendation. Beginning last week, the hours for all offices at the Veterans Memorial Building were restored to FY20 levels, as the board is aware. This was made possible through actions at the fall annual town meeting where funds were transferred to make that possible. So just also kind of an announcement for the public that the VMB is now operating on Friday mornings, so all the offices here are here, even though we don't have walk-in traffic here, we are here, the offices are operating. So for those that want to communicate by phone or email can do so. And just that, let's know that all the employees here are thankful to, you know, have their hours restored and be able to better meet the requirements of their positions by having that extra time, bringing them back to the FY20 levels. And just want to thank the employees for managing through that time. It's been difficult and it will continue to be a difficult period over the next several months. Which leads me into the next part of my discussion on this, which is the status of the operations at the Veterans Memorial Building as far as walk-in traffic. Unfortunately, as has been predicted, the statewide and nationwide status of COVID-19 is worsening by the day. Based upon information that we're receiving from the state, the pandemic is not anticipated to start to abate until the widespread distribution of the COVID-19 vaccine, which although it'll start being distributed to certain segments of population as early as next week, we don't expect, based on information we're receiving, to have widespread distribution of the vaccine until sometime in the spring. And based on that, I am recommending at this time that the VMB remain closed to walk-in traffic by the public until at least the end of March, with the idea that certainly if there's any major change or developments there, it could certainly be looked at again. And that during that time, we could still have staff work in the building and meet with the public by appointment when necessary, but otherwise communicate with the public through phone and email. I think to this point, we've been very successful in carrying out all the municipal business with the public through these methods. And I think the public has been very understanding and we've gotten very few complaints in regards to this. I think we've been able to meet most of the requests and needs of the public. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has in regards to this item. But that's my thoughts on moving forward at this point with the town operations.
Questions from the board?
Do we need to make a motion for this or is this, we're just gonna...
I think it's an informational item.
Okay.
If you want to change it, I think we can, but I think we're asking the town administrator to listen to the recommendation.
Okay.
I think we're all in agreement that to pick a date makes some sense just because it tries to manage expectations a little bit. I'm hoping that October, no, October, that March 31st doesn't turn out to be optimistic. Hopefully we will be in better shape by then, but who knows? And we've been able to satisfy the needs of people, you know, from the building with, you know, really the exception of the senior center, which has been, you know, virtually, it's really, its operations is severely curtailed, but I mean, there's just no other choice at this point. I know that the Council on Aging is doing everything it can to maintain meal services and whatnot, but hopefully we'll be able to get back, bring our seniors back into the building at some point in the spring, but we'll have to see. So anyway, I maybe would ask, Mr. Guzinski, maybe we'd ask the, our health director to come in for our next meeting and just talk to us a little bit about COVID and what the Board of Health is dealing with and what they're working with with respect to vaccine and whatnot, just so we can localize the information, not just get the information from what's going on at a national or state level. But I certainly believe that, particularly today, because the governor, of course, added some additional restrictions, that us being clear that probably at least till March 31st, we're going to have to keep the building closed is probably correct. Not great news, but I guess that's the reality.
Very good.
I mean, it's in all different ways, from not being able to join together in the fire department to wrap gifts for children to, you know, seniors not being able to gather and do crafts and whatnot to, you know, to whatever. I mean, it's enough. We could go on and on and on, we're just trying to get through with it.
Mr. Chair?
So we made it. Yes, ma'am.
I did just want to point out another rec department's been pretty significantly affected too, but I will say that our rec department coordinator, Chris Gorgody, has been coming up with some really outside-of-the-box ideas. And I, hopefully, if you don't already follow her on Facebook or on the website, take a look because she really is coming up with some good ideas. So just an FYI.
Thank you very much. I apologize for forgetting about that, but that's, maybe it's because of my perspective. I agree. Some great things are happening. And the great things are happening, the lights are up, I guess Santa's coming in a bubble or something.
Santa is coming in a snow globe, so on a truck, I believe. So I think that's actually a pretty cool idea considering everything that's going on, and I know Santa's doing some virtual visits. You can sign up as well through Zoom as we're doing, so, you know, you can make it work.
So, and then we have people come to select board meetings with their tie on.
That is lovely.
We can't tie.
Very nice.
I'm sorry if I had to point it out and no one else.
I should hope at our next meeting, which is right before the holidays, that everyone will come dressed in their festive attire.
Holiday attire. Okay. Moving on, speaking of holidays, holiday hours, Mr. Guzinski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I'm sure the board's aware, this year, the Christmas and New Year's holidays fall on Fridays this year. And by contract, the non-emergency employees receive eight hours of holiday, pay for each of those holidays, except because they fall on a holiday, this creates a situation where the employees in the Veterans Memorial Building would be required to come in for four hours on December 24th and December 31st. In light of the situation and the fact that it's been a difficult year and I believe that the town employees have done a great job on carrying through during this difficult time, I am recommending that the board consider closing the Veterans Memorial Building, the library, and DPW for non-emergency operations on December 24th and December 31st and grant the employees the requested additional leave with pay. So wanted to put that out there for the board's consideration and get any feedback the board has in regards to that.
Comments, questions from the board?
I think it makes sense.
I think it's a great idea.
Yes, I think we agree that this would certainly be appropriate. So I guess we need a motion to approve the town administrator's recommendation.
Okay. I move that we approve the town administrator's recommendation to close the VMB library and DPW on December 24th and December 31st and grant the employees the additional leave with pay.
Second.
Been moved in second, and I'll pull the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
The last item we have on our open agenda is with respect to any committee updates from board members who may have attended board meetings as the official liaison. Mr. Guzinski, I guess you're not a board member, are you? Not so far. Mr. Germain, anything to report?
I did attend the enterprise committee, yeah, enterprise committee meeting. They are looking into the stormwater, not stormwater, sewer issue. We need to come up with a presentation, some manner of getting information out to the public so that they understand why we're doing this, why the recommendation, why the recommended change in the bylaw and so on. It's a difficult issue, but it's one that we feel very strongly. We have... It's a, it's a difficult issue, but it's one that we feel very strongly we have to deal with. They also discussed very briefly the Ernie, I can never remember his name, but Lynch, Lynch, report. And understand that we are retaining, I guess, them again, and Carl will be doing work starting shortly to look further into some very specific issues that evolved out of that report. You heard tonight, Energy Committee, and there's, what can I say? They've done really quite a superb job over an extended period of time to put together the information in a manner that was understandable. This was not easy. It takes a lot of effort to come up with the kind of information they have and to put it out in public so that we can understand what, what it means and what the implications are. And so I applaud them in that area. Those are the two committees that I attended.
Great. Ms. Underhill?
I didn't exactly attend a committee that I kind of fell out of communication in terms of when school committee meetings are, but there should be one coming up shortly. I wasn't sure if it was appropriate to let you know, but in relation to the school, I do receive all the messages since my children are enrolled. Were you guys aware that the internet was down there today? Okay, everyone, okay, and then is the telephone problem at the middle high school? You know, so but town hall is not affected?
Not right now, knock on wood.
Okay. All right.
Just one. Other problems there.
We have, yeah, we have some other issues going on, but we're gonna, yeah, we are still, we're still up and running.
Okay. That's all I've got.
I believe it was outside as well, Erin, I'm sorry, Mr. McCaffrey. It was, it was outside, it wasn't the school itself, it was more outside things going on that affected it?
Right, but it sounds like it's specifically impacted both schools.
Right.
Yeah.
Did attend a meeting of the permanent building committee. Couple of things to report on. One is with respect to the DPW project, the building project that is kicking off as we speak. Phase one really was the DPW staff doing the, the work on preparing the site. And now the contractor has, as we indicated, as we, over the last time, has been hired. Construction meetings are beginning. This is the weekly construction, onsite construction meetings. So things will start to move along quite, quite quickly. And as we said, one of the things they asked us to do was to waive the inspection fees. So the weather's been good up until the last few days or last week or last, I guess, four, five days. But so they've been making some progress. I did create sort of one issue which I'm not sure has gotten fixed yet. I'm assuming it has. It's because the site's being worked on, the school buses can't be stored there any longer. So the school was looking for a place to put them. I'm not sure what happened with that, but presumably they're parking somewhere else. We're pretty much up to date in terms of the billings from Cardosi. But again, the good news I'd like to report to the, to the board is that the project is really kicked off and it's underway. The two other projects that are relevant, one is the Lansing Millis, Lansing Millis building. There's some additional work that they're looking to complete so that the permanent building can bring to the town, through the board, recommendations for reutilization of the building, whether the private, public, private partnership or, or whatnot. So hopefully we'll be hearing some substantive information from the PDC within the next couple of months as to the potential utilization of the Lansing Millis building, which is the old train station. The project for the development of the new senior center or a senior center project itself has been, with the agreement of the, of the permanent building committee and the council on aging, has been, has been suspended at this point. There's a great, a genuine feeling by both parties that what we're missing right now is the opportunity to engage the community more actively in in-person meetings to go over plans and ideas. The council on aging feels as though this is really putting them in a significant, I don't want to call it disadvantage, but it makes it harder for them to begin to finalize what they would like to see as well as begin to socialize these ideas among the seniors in town as well as other townspeople. So it's going to be, it's not, it's suspended in the sense that we're looking to, to the time when we can actually engage the public more actively so that we can finalize whatever recommendations are going to be made. Certainly it's a, it's a little bit of a disappointment, but it's an inevitable fallout of COVID. I think that this, this group of folks really wants to meet together, I don't mean just the council, but seniors as a whole to really come up with some great ideas so we can finalize a plan and present something to the town. So that was agreed, I think both the council on aging, as I said, and the permanent building committee agree that this is the right way for us to go. They have notified the consultant who's working on the project, who had indicated that they would be available once the project resumes. So hopefully we're not going to lose so many steps. We may lose some time simply because of the situation we're in. So that was the PDC. So with that, I don't think there's any more reports from the board members. We have one item that we want to deal with, which is an executive session. Our next meeting of this board is the 21st, which I guess we're going to have quite a few interesting things to do based on tonight's meeting as well as whatever comes along. But in the meantime, I think we're going to, I will ask the board to go into executive session. Executive session to consider the purchase, exit, lease or value of real estate, including a parcel 61A on Village Street. So I will poll the board for going into executive session. If we go into executive session, we will emerge for the sole purpose of adjourning the meeting. So I'll poll the board for the executive session. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
That motion is carried and the board will now go into executive session. Thanks to all of you who participated in this evening's meeting. Good night.
Thank you.